And we're live.
Five, four, three, two, one. Committee of Finance, Tuesday the 15th of December 2020. Councilmember Wyatt.
Here.
Councilmember Bowman.
Here.
Councilmember Norakowski.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Present.
Councilmember Wingo.
Present.
Quormus present.
On the top.
Item number one fiscal year 2019 to 2020 auditor communications letter.
Item's open.
We have someone from the Controller's Office speaking on this item?
Yes, good afternoon, I'm sorry, good morning, everyone. Basically, we did receive auditor's communication letter from our external, the city external auditor, stressor, and Malachi, basically the letter is just issuing like the financial statement results and any comments that the auditors had in regards to the City of Buffalo finances.
Now, I just have a question with one of the auditors. You know, I saw that the Controller and then the mayor signed off in Corporation Council. But in your write-up, you said that the common council was the highest authority, is that correct? One of the auditors. Uh, Luke?
Yes, we are actually hired by the Controller and we look at all the units of governments as signing off on the communicating with the audit. The standard practice, I think you're referring to is on the representation letter.
Yeah.
And that's for the individuals taking responsibility for the preparation of the financial statements.
Okay.
Part of those capacities is the Controller's Office who keeps the books and records. The legal has some aspects in there because there are some claims and contingent numbers in the financial statements. And then, of course, the budgetary information, that's the responsibility of the mayor's office. So in the past, those have historically been the individuals signing that letter.
Okay, thank you for that, Luke.
Sure.
Okay, motion to receive and file. Have any, do we have any questions colleagues, any questions on that? Okay, motion to receive.
Please, Stephen, file.
Seconded by Councilmember Wingo.
Item number two fiscal year 2020 comprehensive annual financial report.
Item's open.
Okay, this item is open and I believe we have the Deputy Controller and our Commissioner Finance speak on this.
Yes, once again, Delano Dow, Deputy Controller. First and foremost, the Controller and her staff would like to thank all of the administration and finance staff that attended the informational session on the CAFER last week. And also all of the council members and their representatives that attended either session one or session two. I really felt that the information provided gave a good outlook on the City of Buffalo finances at the end of fiscal year 2019, 2020. And what we'd like to do is actually just provide a couple, a few bullets, a summary of the informational session. And then if anyone have any questions, we, either myself or the City of Buffalo accountant, Bill Ferguson, can answer any additional questions. If you can ask live or we could have a one-off and meet with whoever that might have questions. So in summary, far as the CAFER, the comprehensive annual financial report for the City of Buffalo. The city fund balance was reduced by 3.4 million dollars at the end of fiscal year 2019, 2020. As of June 30th, 2020, the City of Buffalo fund balance have a balance of 89.5 million dollars. Within that general fund balance, we have 24.4 million and non-spendable, 14.2 million and restricted, 38.1 million committed, which is the rainy day fund. And then 12.7 million in assigned fund balance. Our actual to budget revenues were under budget by 47.1 million dollars, primarily due to state aid withholdings and 19.7 million, 11 million in gaming compact revenues not received. We also had compact, we also had budget shortfalls due to the COVID-19 pandemic, budget shortfalls and sales tax receipts, fees, fines and violations. Actually, the budget expenses were under budget by 19.7 million, primarily due to savings and most expenditure budgeted lines. 4.4 million in health insurance and 1.5 million in salary adjustments, which were offset by 5 million dollars in overtime costs from fire and duty disability. Another thing that we need to keep in mind, something that we pointed out in the CAFER is that to help absorb budget shortfall, so the COVID-19 pandemic. The Buffalo issued revenue deficiency notes of 18 million and 7 million dollars that are due December 31st, 2021. So in summary, the City of Buffalo incurred an unfavorable variance of 5.4 million in actual budget revenues. And basically, that's what we discussed during informational session last week. And if anybody have any questions, like I said, myself or City Buffalo accountant, Bill Ferguson can answer any questions.
Colleagues, any questions? I just have a couple of questions. First, can you, Luke, can you talk a little bit about what your, your firm offers as far as, do you do counseling as well? Just give me a little bit about what your group does other than just audits.
Sure. Primary reason we're hired is to form a professional opinion on the financial statements, as you indicated. Certainly, we're available for certain during the year discussions with the city, maintaining our independence. We are not permitted to make any sort of administrative decisions or anything along those lines. But we are available to give best practices and alternatives for the city's bookkeeping and accounting functions, as well as monitoring of the performance. And ultimately, looking and reviewing part of the year-end review as part of our audit process. So, does that directly, so we're available to a certain extent for consultations during the year, as long as our independence is not impaired.
Okay, I mean, you do other audits for other organizations and you provide professional type of counseling to other organizations?
That's correct, we work with several governments throughout New York State.
Okay, yeah, okay, so, because I mean, that's where I'm trying to look into your level of expertise in this area. I mean, because you've been doing audits over the last several years, correct?
That's correct, we work with a handful of cities, about five or six cities throughout the state. We audit close to 16 counties as far away as Warren, New York, down to the downstate Duchess and Ulster. Several local municipalities within Erie County, a lot of the local towns use our firm.
Now, I know that we talked a little bit during our private conversation or internal conversation regarding the other post-employment benefits. Can you just go into that a little bit, talk a little bit about that?
Certainly, other post-employment benefits is health insurance that's promised to retirees during their tenure as employees. And essentially, it was a pronouncement that was put forth by governmental auditing standards boards several years ago. That said that governments will need to recognize that liability on their government-wide financial statements. The government-wide financial statements is not the fund statements. The fund statements would be the general fund budget to actual that the deputy controller was going over. That OPEB, is what we refer to it, OPEB expense is booked as pay-as-you-go in the budgetary concepts. The GASB statement, Governmental Accountants Board's statement, said that the obligation would be recorded on the full financial statements, just as of a disclosure of what the full liability is.
When you see something, I know like last past year, that we did a budget that put in like a plug number of 65 million expecting from the federal government. Is that something that is usual or unusual that you, have you seen that before anywhere?
I think it's safe to say that there's nothing usual about this year with the COVID pandemic. It's an area of concern that we would look to monitor it and what the implications would be should that revenue not come to fruition. As we know, both sides of the aisle actually presented another stimulus, kind of a split stimulus package today. So we're curious to see how that lies within the federal government. But as far as normal, no, but it's not a normal year. I think there does rest an expectation that there could be some federal stimulus money. But from where we sit, as far as the audit goes, we look backwards, not so much forward, but from my professional opinion. It would be something that the city would want to monitor and have contingency plans in place should that money not come to fruition.
Yeah, because I just, I watched the news very closely last night and I did see that the, there was a bipartisan agreement. But if you saw that that bipartisan agreement did not have funding for cities and states. So that's the part that they didn't agree upon, so that's where our concern is. At what point would you be really concerned about us not getting that stimulus? Any stimulus money whatsoever?
That's, that's a difficult question, I mean, I think when the, when there seems to be no bailout in place. Would be when I would, when I would start to exercise the contingency plan. And in all honesty, I would be concerned right now and I would know what the plan is should that money not come through. I think that the varying level of concern would escalate as we get closer and closer and feel that there may not be any, any, any federal stimulus money. But irregardless, I think the city needs to have a, a good level of contingency plans available in the event that this does not come in.
Hey, Luke, if I might add, I mean, I think it's important to note at this time that the, the final product of this service is a written communication that we're in preparing. And included in that written communication will be our concern over the 2021, 22 budget, as well as the 2021 budget. And that there should be a plan and we do address that in the, in the communication that you should receive within the next two to three weeks.
Now, of course, you're hired by the city, have you had any conversation or could you have conversation with the control board if they reached out to you?
Yes.
Colleagues, any questions, I know I'm just running, any questions, I don't want to, Deputy Controller?
Just to speak to the information I was just sharing, for one, we do work with Dresser-Malachi and they do hold accounting or financial trainings for all city. For common council, for administration and for the Controller's Office. So they hold at least three or four informational sessions per the direction of the Controller. So if anyone on this call would like to attend any of these accounting or financial informational sessions, they're more than, they, they can attend at any time. Second, our group have been concerned in regards to the federal stimulus. The Controller has noted that numerous times throughout this past fiscal year, along with the city accountant. So those are items that we are looking at, we are concerned about the 25 million that's due December 31st, 2021. So this is nothing new to anyone on this call, these are questions that the Controller's Office has also addressed or put on the forefront for the council, along with administration. And citizens of the City of Buffalo, we will continue to work with the common council, work with Dresser-Malachi, to work with administration, to make sure the City of Buffalo finances that are accurate and correct and share that information. So this is nothing new, the information that's being shared today and our group are more than capable to answer any of the questions that's being asked also.
Thank you, Deputy Controller. In December of 2021, I know that we, is that, we always have to pay our pension amount at that period, correct?
Correct.
Okay, now, is that going to still be the, what, this year is 44?
As of today, we're looking to pay in December, but primarily we have to remember that we also waiting on our first state aid payment. We're expected to receive a state aid payment around 13 million dollars this month. So as long as we receive it this month, then we should be able to make that payment. If not, we will address it with this group and share the information if we make that payment or not.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I wasn't speaking to this year, actually, I was trying to get to next year, because next year, will the amount be about 44 million, is that pretty much?
It's about the standard depending on a number of people that we making payments to, but that's part of the budget. So that will be addressed in next year's budget, how do we make the pension payment along with this 25 million revenue deficiency?
Right, and that's where I'm getting to, we're, I mean, we got to start thinking long-term, we just can't think that, okay, what is our strategy if we don't get the stimulus? Because from what we're hearing and I think we've had some conversation with some of our federal delegation and it seems as though they don't seem to be as optimistic as they were before. So where we, where do we go if we owe 66 million or 67 million in December?
Let me say this real quick, trust me, I actually had a conversation with Donna, Commissioner Eschers yesterday. Everyone's concerned, everyone's trying to think of a plan, what are we going to do? We're not sitting here saying, we hope that this money come in. We, we wanted to come in, but we're sitting there trying to figure out if it don't, if it don't come in, what are we going to do? So we worried about 65 million, we're about 11 million, we're worried about making a payment at 25 million. We also worried, I mean, so much to make sure that the city is able to provide services and make sure people are employed. But from a financial standpoint, we have to look and this is like, this is not new, we've been talking about this all year.
Yeah.
Everyone is concerned on this call.
To the auditors, you put something in here that I just had a question on, you said during the year ended, June 30th, June 30th of 2020, the city had no changes in their bond ratings. Is that, is that true? I thought we did have a change.
When, I believe that change came after the fiscal year ended, June 30th, if I remember correctly.
Correct.
And I think where you're referring to is in the transmittal letter at the beginning of the document. That's a, that's a letter that's compiled from the Controller's Office, that's just incorporated into the financial statements.
Okay.
I believe the ratings change happened subsequent to year end.
I know you. The rating actually came in on September 16th.
So September 16th was well changed, okay, thank you. Colleagues, if you have a question, put your hand up, because I can go and go and go, Councilmember Majority Leader Rivera.
You're on mute. Thank you very much to the Controller's Office and the auditors. With regards to the money that we're borrowing, especially from the Board of Education. At some point, that money is due back them, back to them. And if we don't receive the stimulus money, I assume then we probably would have to borrow should they need the money. Because they're probably going through similar circumstances that we are in terms of cut from state aid. So I'm concerned about the money that's outstanding that we owe the Board of Education and how we pay that back. At some point, they're going to either need it or want it back and they have concerns as well. How do we look at the borrowing that we're doing right now from the Board of Education?
Okay, I'll speak to this first and then we do have the city's cash debt manager, Greg Semensky on line and Greg, if you could add on after I speak. We've had this conversation a number of times also, we've, we do submit, the Controller's Office do submit a cash flow report each month. We file it with the council, the Board of Education, I receive a copy of the cash flow along with administration. You can look at each month to see when the city go tap into the Board of Education cash account. Is, as we stated, it's a joint account. You can see when the city is in a positive, when the city is in the negative. We project out, we looked at prior year cash in and out, and then we look at current year cash in and out, anything that we know anticipating that's coming up. Similar to what Councilmember Wyatt is saying in regards to the pension payment in December. We receive state aid, our primary revenue sources is state aid, sales tax and property tax. We receive our state aid three times out the year, which is the months of December, March and June. The Board of Education receives state aid once a month. As money comes in, we use it, it's a joint account between two entities. We keep track along with the Board of Education, which funding, what portion of that account is for the City of Buffalo, what portion of that account is for the Board of Education. We monitor that, we provide reports to everyone on this call to monitor it also. As money comes in more for the city, like say for example, in June of 2021, that's when we get our huge estate aid payment. You'll see that money being replenished back to Board of Education if we're in the negative from December all the way through, through May. The Board of Education, we, myself, the Controller, Greg Smith, we've had conversations with the Board of Education. We will generate a process to make sure they're comfortable far as the funding and how the cash is coming in and out of that account. But we are accounting for what portion is for the city and what portion is for the Board of Education. And Greg, I don't know if you want to add anything else to it to answer Councilmember Rivera's question?
I think you summarized it pretty well, I mean, it is, you know, is it concerning, certainly. Just like, you know, like, like we're talking about the stimulus aid, is that concerning? Absolutely, I mean, moving forward, there has to be, you know, plans in place to address that if that doesn't come into fruition. That's, you know, that's the bottom line, I think.
Projections, you're projecting that we're able to repay that back absent stimulus money?
Absence of stimulus money is going to be very difficult to do anything.
Okay.
End of the, end of the fiscal year.
And that's one thing, when you look at the cash flow report, far as Councilmember Rivera, if you're looking at last month, the June 2021, we do anticipate, I mean, we budget. That 11 million from the tribal compact along with that 65 million from the state, along with, not 65 million from the federal government. And then that last state aid payment of the year for the city. If those three factors don't come in, it's going to be very, very tough for the city. We understand what the administration is going through and in conversations hopefully that they're having with other electors. I know the Controller is also reaching out to other electors to make sure that funding do come in. Only thing we can do is, is project and then book what's actual and then speak to the variants and share with this group.
Thank you. Luke, is this typical that a governmental entity would be, they have joint accounts and they use each other's money? Is that something that's typical, because I was told that this was how it was designed. But I know I hear from board members who kind of are incensed that we're using their money. To be quite honest, I'm thankful it's there because if not, you know, we probably bankrupt at this point. But is that typical that they just set up this way?
The arrangement and the school district's relationship to the city is unique to the City of Buffalo. There's only a handful within the state that has similar school district embedded within its financial statements. So the brief answer is, is no, it's not typical because it's not a typical relationship. I can say that it's been the practice within the City of Buffalo for as long as we went back. We talked to previous controllers and ascertained that this has been the relationship between the school and the city for several years. And it has become common practice within the City of Buffalo.
You talked about in the write-up on page 39 about the city's fund balance policy. And I think you may have referenced it in our internal conversation about the concerns with that, not having something in writing. Did you, I just want to make sure I'm clear on, did you reference that that's something that the bondholders are looking to have something like that that makes them feel a little bit better?
Yeah, well, we look at it as a, a lot of the rating agencies are forward-looking. It's great that there's a, that there's a fund balance policy in there that has a threshold of what your fund balance should be. What, what we, when you, when anyone's looking at the, at the forward in the future is, well, what happens when you fall below that threshold where the city is now? What's the replenishment plan? So, so I would think that anyone that's looking towards the future, the next one, two, three, four, five years, has a vested stake in understanding what the replenishment plan would be. And that's where we think the, the fund balance policy, first, we applaud the city on having a policy, many governments don't even have a policy. But the next level would be, what's the trigger of how it's going to get replenished? Whether it be kind of organizing a committee similar to what, what the deputy controller is talking about, the actively monitoring that. Maybe there's a representative from the different wings of government providing brainstorming alternatives. Certainly, a multi-year budgeting plan with different situations and scenarios in there. There's several different alternatives that we could work with, with the city to provide some ideas. And I know the Controller's Office already has a few ideas out of their own that they are pursuing.
Because we do have a replenishment policy to counsel that puts forth a resolution. We haven't moved on it yet because waiting for our Corporation Council to put it into a form for us. But we will be following up with that, we will share that with you just to get your input on it, okay?
Absolutely.
Colleagues, any other, any questions, Councilmember Norakowski?
Just one current question, Deputy Controller, you did say, and you went through how much of the reserve fund balance we have and committed and assigned in all the certain sections. But you also did say that it was reduced by 3%, where did that 3% come from, which, which category?
It was a budget shortfall and it came from our assigned fund balance, a budget shortfall to close out fiscal year 2019, 2019, 2020. A budget shortfall of 3.4 million, reduce our, our fund balance and assigned fund balance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Bill, I'll just hop in for one second, Bill Ferguson, City Accountant. Since we don't have any undersigned fund balance, normally it would come out of undersigned, any changes, any deficits would go into undersigned. Since we don't have that, we work your way up from unassigned to assigned. And what it really did, it sort of ate into the pot that we normally would set aside for judgment claims. And we have about 3.3 million dollars in assigned fund balance for judgment and claims, where we are estimating around 8.8 million dollars of potential liability.
Thank you, thank you, Bill. Question regarding the solid waste and this is to the Commissioner of Finance. On the report, it says that, I believe he said outstanding balance of 13.3 million owed to the, to the general fund, is that correct?
Yes, it is, they closed the year with a $5 million reduction in their outstanding liability. Prior year, it was around 18 million and it was reduced to 13. So that 5 million dollars did go into the fund balance, which assisted in keeping the fund balance where it was.
So shouldn't we be taking some of that and put it replenishing our fund balance?
It goes right into the fund balance, it's part of our fund balances, the city.
Our reserve, I'm speaking to our reserve.
Right, so the 18 million that was in reserve for the outstanding to our user fee has been reduced to 13. And the 5 million then dropped down into other parts of the fund balance.
Really, what it really did, that 5 point, the 5 million dollar payment that, that the general fund received from the solid waste fund. It really allowed us to keep our assigned fund balance sufficient enough to cover in conferences and motor vehicle and self-insurance. And put that 3.3 million dollars aside for judgment and claims. If the solid waste fund was unable to pay that this year, we, but we would have been on, our assigned fund balance would have been 5 million dollars lower.
Thank you, Bill. Any other questions, colleagues?
Can I just?
Yes.
For the year end, you know, I know we didn't have a surplus at year end. But I know we also all understand that we went through COVID from March going forward. You know, our projections were closer to an 18 million dollar deficit overall. We had no idea we were going to get cut that 20 million or 19.7 million at the end of the year. You know, at that time, or really until the week before they reduced our payment. So we really, I think we did better this year than we had anticipated. You know, we ended up perhaps closer to a nine or 10 million dollar deficit as opposed to the 18 or 20 million dollars that we had a third quarter projected. So, and I think going forward, you know, we are all concerned about stimulus. Indications that the mayor has had conversations with the governor, he has had conversations with our federal delegation. The discussions change from day to day, I think he feels very comfortable that once the new president comes in, the discussions will continue. You know, we do continue to look at the budget and look at different options that we have. So I don't want anyone to think that we're not thinking about it at this point.
Yeah, we were, I think in our private, well, internal conversation, there was something stated about money that has been saved. Where's the savings at, where can you, can you touch that number somewhere, is it in the balance sheet, is it somewhere in the books? Where is that number of the money that we've saved on expenses from what you were saying?
From last year?
Well, you said savings from now, where are the savings that you said that the department heads and things where you all put away, where's that?
Oh, well, we've put money in a freeze account, which is technically an account labeled freeze.
Where's that? What's in it right now?
There's 10 million dollars in there right now.
Okay, is that something that the Controller sees as well?
Yes.
Okay. I guess my, one of my final questions to the audit group, again, I want to thank you for your diligence and transparency and giving us information. And also the Controller's Office, because I see you guys want to keep fighting that like we're not saying you're transparent, we see you're transparent, you can do a great job for us. But I just want to thank you and we'll get you that. Um, but I just want to thank you and um, we'll get you that um, fund balance policy to have you review and get your input on um, our replenishment policy because we've had a number to, common council has been doing a great job as far as putting policies forward. And um, I think we have to be a little more insistent on getting those policies on, on the um, in, on the agenda and approved. Um, because you said that that's something that the um, bondholders look at positively and we want to make certain that we doing all we can in the midst of this pandemic to ensure that we're doing what we can do um, as a body to make certain that we maintain those um, bond ratings because we know that's critical to our, our lifeline, especially um, if it's not that we're going to get the stimulus. And from what I'm hearing, even if we do get stimulus, um, they said that that's directly not going to come to the city, it's going to go to the state first. So it's a number of issues that, you know, the council has been bringing forth and having dialogue about because of our concerns. Because nothing is clear, um, we've been told that we're confident that we're going to get this, confident that we're going to get that. And all those things have shown that um, nobody can be that confident because it hasn't come through. Um, but we'll continue to work as a, as a body to do what we can. But again, thank you all for your participation. Colleagues, any final questions or comments? Okay, council member Revere. You're on mute, you're on mute.
Mr. Chair, over the last year plus, um, the common council have asked many questions regarding the financial condition of the city, the projections, um, whether or not we're relying on things that aren't reliable. Um, and it wasn't to get into a fight with uh, the administration or the controller's office. Uh, it was how can we work well together in these times um, to mitigate the financial problems that the city is going through right now. And we extend that, we continue to extend that olive of cooperation to the administration, to the controller's office. If we ask questions and we're repetitive, it's because we're still in the same situation and we still uh, are trying to find answers to some of the things that are going on out there. And sometimes the council is not aware of, and so we ask the questions because we don't know what contingencies are out there. Other than there's a contingency plan out there. So we really don't know. So we're, we're, we're sitting back waiting to see what the contingencies are. Uh, and we ask the questions and it's not because we're trying to fire, to, to move fingers here. As a matter of fact, we're all responsible for the financial condition of the city. Um, and I take my responsibility as well, and I want to make the best decision that I can, and I'm certain the common council and the administration uh, would like to as well. And I know they're spending quite an awful lot of time, uh, when we're not in meetings. I imagine the administration is going through everything, trying to figure things out. And they mentioned the savings there, we count where they've been able to find some savings. And that's good news for us, uh, because that's exactly what we're looking for. So thank you very much to everyone.
The last question um, for the auditors, is there a benefit in having some written plan as far as our contingency for moving forward? Is that, is there a benefit anywhere to make sure our bondholders? I don't know if they asked the question, you know, what are we doing um, to deal with the COVID? Is that something that you think would be a benefit for us to have a written plan?
I think in the eyes of, and put yourself in the eyes of an investor, if you're investing in any corporation or any municipality, uh, certainly there would be a little bit air of relief to know that there's some sort of plan out there and that, that's been transparent and, and communicated. Uh, that's how I would, I would view it. It's, it's probably a matter of the individual investors' preference. Um, but my, myself, if, if I saw a municipality with a, a fund balance where you are and I said, I was thinking about investing and I would say, okay, uh, however we, we were punishing it and there's a formal plan. And then I asked that question, well, what if this happens and you have a response immediately? I think there is a little level of comfort from the, from the investing side of it.
Hey Luke, I, I think I want to put a caveat on there. Um, just, I, I, I agree. Uh, maybe I, I changed the, the word plan to process. Because I don't want to get too specific because if, as we all talk about the uncertainty, if we fail, that's going to be held against us.
Right.
So I think the better answer is what is the process that we're going to have going forward to figure out how we're going to fill any potential deficit?
Great, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much for your, your guidance and spending your time with us this morning. Really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, motion to table?
Motion to table.
Seconded by council member Bowman. Next item?
Item number three, rescinding unissued bond resolutions.
Items open.
Uh, so this document was filed just to uh, get approval from the council. These are four. We have three projects that were either complete or um, that weren't moving forward. Uh, we did list uh, the three projects uh, in uh, the document that we filed with the council. Um, Greg Simaski, you can go into a little bit more detail. If you guys need any different, any additional information on these three projects. And a request.
So, yeah, so on, on these, the, the list of the projects includes Bailey Avenue. Um, that bridge reconstruction is complete and the plan is not to sell any additional bonds for, for that project. So that would, we would rescind that on resol, the remaining um, bond resolution on that. Um, Allen Dale Theater and the Crane Library are um, minor amounts, three hundred dollar or three hundred dollars and seven hundred fifty dollars. Those on resolutions have been sold.
Can't really hear you.
Just remaining balance.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, the plans for engine twenty five. We, last year, if you remember, we wrote a larger resolution that included the construction and the planning piece of that. So um, that planning bond is no longer needed. And then uh, the construction at the Mohawk parking ramp. Um, that was inserted, I think, is no longer needed. The administration, I don't think is moving forward with the reconstruction at that Mohawk ramp.
What's that total grid?
Um, two point three million.
Any question, council member Bowman?
Hey Greg, uh, just wanted to touch on that Bailey Ave, uh, the bridge reconstruction. How did we overshoot on that? Or could you just give me some background on that, that project? How uh, we ended up having so much more?
Um, I'm not sure about the budget. That might be a, a public works question, but you know, the good thing is, is we didn't sell it. So there isn't unused bond proceeds sitting out there. So that's, that's definitely the positive that we only sold what we really needed.
Right, okay. I'll follow.
Council member, are you okay with that? Or do you want us to?
I'll follow up with public works. I could call Mike.
Okay, so we want to send that without record or do you want to just approve?
Yeah, go ahead. No, I, I, I just want to know.
Okay.
Mr. Chair? Hey, I'm sorry. Um, I, I'm looking at an article I saw this morning about the city wanting to do the Mohawk ramp. It's on, it's in the Buffalo News today. So is that, is, is that going to have to be reissued? We're going to start that process over again?
Right.
Um, I, I did also see that article today. I mean, I know they're, I think they're seeking for redevelopment of that. So I mean, that might be a reason why it's being um, not being acted on because if, if you would sell that bond, you'd have to pay. If you sold that parking ramp, the money would have to come back to pay that uh, bond back. So maybe that's the reason why it's.
Okay, with, with administration. I just thought it was odd to see that and then they're putting that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why it's being removed.
Commissioner?
That's why it is being removed because they were going to do repairs. Now they're looking for a designated developer and they may redevelop it into something else. So at this point, we're not going to spend the money on that.
Okay, thank you, thank you, uh, chairman.
Thank you. So we can, the motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Seconded by council member Noakowski. Next item?
Number four, letter to the controller.
Items open.
Okay, this item is open and we have someone from BPD on. Okay. Gentlemen, someone want to speak um, on this item?
Uh, Commissioner Lockwood and Catherine Alvo.
Um, Commissioner, you sent this letter to the controller and I'm just confused why, but you can do whatever you want. You're the commissioner. Um, does the controller have some oversight over this that we don't, aren't aware of?
No, um, the point that I, I needed vehicles and we discussed it back in June. And every day that I go by without vehicles and it's being held up, um, I get, you know, complaints from my, from the citizens out there as far as investigations and delay on respondents to call. I'm in a bad situation with vehicles.
Okay.
And I need every vehicle I can get right now.
So, so um, the conversation, I had the council staff go back to the conversation regarding this item because we are very much aware that you needed vehicles and I believe the council has been very supportive of you getting vehicles at every step. I don't think we've been um, against you getting your vehicles. Um, but I believe um, the Buffalo Police Department has been advised, well, this is the conversation from that day when we had this item table, um, that there was a conversation regarding take home vehicles. And the council members expressed concerns regarding cars not being in the city of Buffalo, transparency and accountability. The unmarked police vehicles must be tracked in real time online before any purchase. So myself and the council president had requested something, um, and we never got any information on that. So I guess that's really where the held, holdup is. It's not on us. We were just asking about can these vehicles have some type of GPS tracking on? And we were told that you all were going to look into it. So we never got anything. So, or can these be vehicles be tracked? Can they have a GPS on them?
Um, I guess, I mean, you can, but um, the, these vehicles, what we're discussing right now is vehicles that they're not ta, take home. These vehicles are, um, been signed to uh, the district detectives and uh, units. Um, the, these vehicles are not um, take home vehicles, the ones that um, we just, and I understand what you're saying, that you wanted, the ones who was taken home uh, a policy, um, put a policy in place for those.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, well, we had the conversation with you all. You, no one said that they weren't take home vehicles because that's the whole point. We were talking about situations where these vehicles were going out as far as Orchard Park or wherever. And um, here we get new cars and we're putting wear and tear on them. And you know, people are just driving them home and maybe whatever they do in the city. So that, that was our, their conversation. So I just want to be clear, this was not being held up by the common council. We were just waiting for information for you all and you're saying right now that these vehicles are not take home vehicles?
No.
Okay, um, council president, any comments?
Uh, no, I think, I think you uh, summed it up uh, well, of the reason, yeah, there was no holdup at all. We were just waiting. So um, if these are not take home vehicles, you know, I mean, personally, I'm okay with it. I like to see our entire fleet, not just police department uh, vehicles uh, but be able to be tracked. Um, I think that helps as far as, it's not for me about uh, wanting to know exactly where the vehicle is. But when you talk about maintenance of vehicles, all those type of things, how many miles are being put on vehicles? Um, and as we are going to a more uh, computer-based uh, government, um, I just think that that's important really on all vehicles. I don't want to hold up uh, this item, which we haven't held it up. Really, it's just been sitting there, like you said, waiting on the answer because we were told that it would not be very expensive to track them. I think going forward, um, that this common council uh, may have to do policy on city-owned vehicles uh, in making sure that there is a tracking regardless of whether it is a sanitation truck or whether it is a police vehicle because it is uh, an asset or possibly a, a big liability to the city uh, depending on where these vehicles are. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Um, Majority Leader Revere?
Thank you. Why? Mr. Chair, while we're on the take home vehicles, um, I know that it's, a lot of this is contractual where officers um, are allowed to take vehicles home. However, uh, it doesn't require that the vehicles be the new vehicles. Um, and if there are take home vehicles, I suggest that it be the oldest vehicles that we have on the fleet. I don't want to buy new vehicles to give to people, and I'm not saying in this particular instance. But in any other instance where we have new vehicles, I, I would hesitate or certainly reluctant to see a new vehicles go out to the suburbs, uh, whether they're inspectors, whether they're captains, whether they're lieutenants. Uh, with the exception perhaps of units that are responding to calls directly in the city of Buffalo in an emergency. I believe that those ta, take home vehicles should be the oldest vehicles on the fleet. I don't want to spend money on repair and maintenance to, so they can drive back and forth uh, to the suburbs. I would like to see them, i- if there's a process for making sure that these old vehicles, um, I don't think it's contractual that we give them a new vehicle, simply that they have a vehicle. So I would prefer going forward that uh, when we're assigning vehicles based on contractual obligations, that they be the oldest vehicles on the fleet and the new vehicles be given to the officers that are responding to nine eleven calls uh, day in and day out. Uh, so I, I'm, I'm, when I hear the take home vehicle, I, obviously I have a problem. With the exception of people that are responding to emergency calls and they have to respond from their houses to the scene of a crime, absent that, I, I, I just can't see um, buying new vehicles and passing them down to people that are going to be moving or move, uh, going back and forth from the suburbs. So I don't know if that's a policy that the police department can look into to make sure that uh, the oldest vehicles on the fleet are the ones that are assigned for taking home. And I don't know if you can respond to that, Commissioner?
Commissioner? You're on mute.
Oh.
Okay.
Go on mute, can you hear me now?
We can hear you guys.
Okay, um, yes, there's been some um, arbitration um, where uh, they've been awarded take home vehicle, but it doesn't state um, if it's a new vehicle or if it's an old vehicle. So um, you know, that's something that you can look at.
Well, I would like, I would like the administration, um, the police administration, uh, who assigned the vehicles um, to, to seriously consider uh, just allowing the older vehicles to be used for take home.
Okay. Comment, did you have a comment? Captain?
No, no comment. I'm in on that.
Well, did you, um, Commissioner Estridge, I guess that's what we talked to you about, what council president said about um, the GPS is on the vehicles. Is that something that the administration can look into or? I mean, I know that we have them on some, at some capacity.
We have them on most of our public work vehicles right now, our sanitation and plows and a lot of the, a lot of the vehicles in, most of the vehicles in public works at this time. Some in parking, um, we have not done any in police that I'm aware of. Um, we can look into it. There is a cost involved because it's a tracking and a maintenance cost on there. So we can give you that information.
Um, Commissioner, just, just want to ask you also, is there, when people get gas, is that tracked? Is that, do we get that audited? Is that audit? Well, first of all, is it tracked?
Yes, it is. Everybody has a key, a key ring, they call them, a gas ring. And you have to punch in your social security number and mileage of the vehicle. And that is data that's read through what is called our fuel master. And that report is sent out to each of the commissioners every month on their personnel.
Is that audited?
Uh, the, yes, the department of audit has audited the gasoline usage probably two or three years in a row.
Okay, was that done last year?
Uh, I believe it was.
Okay.
I believe that was a follow-up last year. They did it the prior year and there was a follow-up last year.
Okay, so, so the deputy controller, can we get a copy of that audit?
I'm pretty sure if we, we, I can follow up. I'm pretty sure if we did the audit, we filed it with council already. So I'm looking to that and get it back to uh, either yourself or uh, chief of staff.
Chief of staff, okay, thank you. All right, um, motion to approve? You're on mute. First of all, let's make the motion to approve on the condition that these are not take home vehicles. As long as they're not take home vehicles, we are fine.
Motion to approve uh, with the condition that they be not take home vehicles.
Seconded by council member Noakowski. And Commissioner, just want to be clear with you. We are not trying to do anything to prevent the police from doing their job. So I apologize that we didn't communicate um, on this item, but definitely whatever we can do to support you all, you know that you got it. So you know that from day one, when you needed vehicles, we did our best to get you vehicles. We know we want you to all be able to do your job and do it effectively and safely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item number five, permission to enter into an agreement with Duncan Solutions.
Items open.
Commissioner Estridge, can you just go over this real quick, what this is all about?
Here, um, our Director of Finance, Halima, is gonna go over. We have a, we had a contract with a collection agency, which had expired about a year ago. So we've been in the process of updating the bid. We went out for an RFP and Halima can go through all the process and how we chose Duncan.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So we issued an RFP, um, with the hopes of getting some more experienced collection agencies that have a little bit more, um, capabilities as far as reach and, um, technology and things of that nature. So, um, this, um, current contract with Mercantile was up actually June thirtieth of two, of twenty eighteen. So we've been, um, going month to month with them. Um, but it's taken all this time because we're, you know, trying to revamp internally our operations, figuring out what it is that we need, uh, doing some cleanup, so on and so forth. So this RFP was, um, issued back in August. Uh, we, August thirteenth, the response date was the twenty-fourth. We actually received, sorry guys, we actually received seven respondents. Um, and of those seven respondents, four of those respondents were viable candidates. Um, and of those four, we had a subcommittee made up of about eight to nine departments, um, review, um, those requirements. And we settled on getting interviews with two of those companies. Of the two companies, we, the recommendations that the subcommittee put forth was that, um, we would, uh, wish to enter into an agreement with Duncan Solutions.
Is any, any questions, colleagues? Is Duncan a local company, where's Duncan located?
Duncan is not a local company, although it has, um, some operations and employees in New York State. They do have contracts in New York State, they're actually located in Wisconsin. Um, but they are, I think with their parent company, they have about a thousand employees, um, over two hundred in the state of New York alone.
So how would that process work as far as getting them our information? How would that work with them? Their, what would their process be from the city to get them information to do collections?
So we would set up, just like today, we give a file from the accounting system, Munis. Um, and each month from Munis and from parking and adjudication goes, um, they get a manual file that's sent to, um, Mercantile. The same thing would be in place. We're actually widening our, um, portfolios. So in addition to what we already send to, to Mercantile, we'll set up, um, collections for other Hanson, products that are not currently being collected upon through the collection agency. So we'd set up automated files that are made available the end of the month. And, um, anything over ninety days will be automatically, you know, spun up and sent over to Duncan, um, timely each month, at the same time each month.
What would you say, what is our outstanding right now as far as collections?
So right now, with, hold on, let me pull it up real quick. So right now Mercantile has about twenty-five million dollars. Um, our total, their total recoveries is about, uh, three and a half percent. Um, the goal for our new collection agency would be to take on an additional thirteen million dollars that we have in collectibles for accounts not currently being sent. Um, so for a total of just under forty million dollars.
So we're right now, what is the, what is the breakout? What is the largest portion, I mean, of our receivables? I know we had a list and that list is, uh, pretty luminous. And I, and I don't think many of those from what we've had in the past were even collectible. Are we merging that? I know we've been waiting on a list, um, to merge some of those things. Are we merging some of those or will they be merged before we send them to, um, this new company?
So they'll get, they'll get a combination of reports. They're not gonna be all in one, um, report because there's different products and they're coming from different systems. Um, so they'll get several product reports. Um, the biggest population for the current portfolio is actually adjudication. Um, that'll, I think adjudication will continue to be the highest portfolio, adjudication and then followed by city devils.
So, so did you say that the total, pretty much the total outstanding was, did you say twenty-five million or forty million?
Uh, it's, uh, it's closer to forty million.
Forty, four, forty million? And of that percentage, how much would you say is reasonably amount that we could see? Because we can put forty million on the table, but if it's something that's beyond, um, six months, it may be uncollectible.
Yeah, so this is, um, basically a portfolio, that, those, those dollars in that count is only including, um, anything less the past statute, the statute limitation, so less than six years. Um, of that, conservatively speaking, our goal is to, um, increase collections to about ten percent. So again, today we're collecting about three and a half percent. That's only, you know, about nine hundred thousand dollars. Um, increasing the port, uh, the collection, um, uh, liquidation rate to about ten percent is a take home of, or an increase of about three million dollars.
So there is, what is their approach as far as, um, collecting? I know that every, every collection agent, he has an approach. Um, you know, some of them start right at fifteen days, they're on top of it, you know? Is, what, what is their approach for this, for Duncan?
Uh, well, we had them, um, uh, pretty much go through their workflow and their approach is basically as to the day that they receive our files, they, um, send our files through a scrubbing process where they classify, uh, the ability to collect on, and they basically score each account. Um, and once they do that, they determine what level of collection it is. And then they have different processes for each of those steps. So that process happens immediately as soon as they get, receive files. Um, we, they have a, a, a process whereby they will work with the city of Buffalo at each step of the way. Any, you know, population that, um, they have an opinion on as far as collectability is concerned, they will engage the city to discuss that. We will also be setting up monthly meetings with, um, with monthly management meetings with that company. Um, they also have advanced, um, reporting and, uh, access to, uh, electronic and information. So they have a, a portal that is external, that we have access to, um, do any kind of research on and pull reporting if we shall, so feel. Um, they will also customize all of our reports, um, a- as frequently as we need them to. So, um, they're doing a lot of, uh, things that we don't currently have, uh, which makes it very difficult to manage the port, portfolio, what, what stage it's in, um, what action's been taken. Uh, the, the, the standard reports that they offer actually give you the status of each account, how many times they've been contacted, what the, um, call ended in, um, all of that stuff. And the number of days in between calls, number of letters, all of that information will be right on hand in those canned reports. And that's before we even talk about customizing, so.
So is that, so is it a mixture of calls, physical calls or is it automated as far as the calls to the?
Physical calls, email, um, calls, email and letters. So, man.
Commissioner, do you have a comment?
No, we did look at the number of, um, agencies as, um, Halima mentioned. This one also has the benefit of going out of state, which we don't have now. So that'll benefit cer- certainly with parking, that'll help us also.
Yes, absolutely.
On their base.
Yeah, and in addition to that, they have a, they employ a, um, attorney's office that works only for them. And they work on all things collections related to Duncan's portfolio. Um, so this is a really a huge benefit, uh, when you're talking about the adjudication portfolio, city demolitions, things like that, bankruptcies, um, all of those things. So that was also a key benefit.
And they also have a, oh, they'll have a phone line dedicated for the city of Buffalo.
Correct.
For people to call in.
A phone line and a department.
Are you sure is dedicated?
They, they will actually, uh, they actually set up, um, a group of employees specific for the city of Buffalo with a, a phone number, so.
Well, it sounds pretty impressive. Hopefully, um, what you're looking for is what we get. But you, thank you for the presentation, it's very thorough, but, um, very insightful. Commissioner, will we get a list that we're gonna be processing as far as merging old accounts? Or are you gonna let them go through it first and then we're gonna get something at some point?
Um, we can show you what we're sending to them.
We'd appreciate that, when do you think you can get that to us?
Miss Major?
Um, well, as soon as I get an approval to, to move forward with, uh, the award, then, um, we'll follow that.
A- any questions, colleagues? Um, motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Seconded by Councilmember No- Noakowski. Okay, next item? Are we ready for the next item? Sean? You're on mute. That mute button is just not working. There you go.
Item number six, Western New York Polygraph Services.
Items open.
If this item is open, who's gonna speak on it? Doug, you're on mute, Doug. Now we can't see you, you're still on mute. Okay. Okay, we have Captain, Captain, can you just talk about the need for having this, um, polygraph contract?
Yeah, so the, I believe there's two separate contracts. There's one specific to BPD, which is used for criminal investigative work. And then I believe that there's a second contract with civil service for pre-employment screening services. Uh, we utilize the polygraph services for, they said criminal investigations, mostly around our special victims unit, homicide unit, things of that nature.
Doug?
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you.
Hi, I, I'm so sorry, somehow I disconnected myself. But this is a, this is a, uh, Western New York Polygraph with, uh, Michael Pliska. It's an existing contract. And this is the, um, I think the third or fourth renewal period. So it will be the last year that we're working with him and then we will put it out to RFP.
Okay, okay. Okay, and I think we got, I got what I really wanted, um, BPD, so I'm fine. Any questions, colleagues? Motion. Motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Bowman. Anything else, I think that's it, right?
There we have something off the table, item twelve.
Take from the table?
Take from, table item twelve.
Item number twelve, CPC budget and bond sale recommendation.
Motion to receive and file.
Okay, um, is that, do, is that what we want to do with that item? Because I thought we wanted the CPC to come before us to talk about, and they have not come before us as of yet. Do we still want to receive and file that item? Majority Leader?
I'm sorry.
We, we wanted the CPC to come before us regarding the capital budget.
Yeah, we had invited, um, for some reason they, uh, never answered the invitation or never got back.
Okay, so, so I, I don't think we want to receive and file that item then. Um, um, not Councilmember Noakowski?
It's up to you, at, at the end of the day, um, they submitted a recommendation, we can place our own council amendments in and approve it, um, on our council floor, so it's up to you.
Okay, listen, okay, well, we're receiving file it.
Motion to receive and file.
Seconded by Councilmember Bowman?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded by Councilmember.
One minute, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Chair, Chairman, we need to return to item number four. I believe it was the letter communication to, um, the controller. I believe that we may have approved and placed conditions on it. And I think it was just an informational letter, so we may need to actually take the actual item from, uh, the table in order to place the conditions on it.
Thank you.
The item number four, I think, was just a letter, a, a informational letter to the controller.
Okay, so motion to rescind the motion to approve by Councilmember Bowman, seconded by Councilmember Wingo.
And the motion should be to take item number twenty-four, I believe, from the table, which might be the actual item that we had tabled, um, from BPW.
Karen, the actual item, I'm sorry, uh, Councilmember Y, the actual item is number twenty-six, approval to purchase new vehicles.
Okay.
Motion to take item twenty-six from the table.
Motion to take items twenty-six from the table, seconded by Councilmember Noakowski.
Uh, motion.
Motion to, motion to approve. Seconded by Councilmember, uh, Bowman.
Okay, is that it?
And it's, Mister Chairman, at this point, number four needs a new motion, the option would be to receive and file.
Motion to revisit item number four.
Motion to revisit item number four?
Motion.
Motion to rescind the previous motion.
Motion now is to receive and file.
Motion is to receive and file, seconded by Councilmember Bowman.
Motion.
Motion to adjourn, seconded by now, Councilmember Noakowski, thank you all.
Thank you.